Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. As always, our first fun event is Student of the Month.
Okay, we'll start off with Hornet Park. Mrs. Probus.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Probus, Instructional Leader at Hornet Park Elementary School. And as I mentioned to you last month, I'd like to highlight each month when I get to spend a few minutes with you, three different categories: something pertaining to our students, something to our families and community, and then finally with our staff as well. So to get kicked off, I'd like to focus on our favorite, our students. Our 451 students have been focused and they're showing a lot of progress this year. For our TAP yearly cluster goal, we set a goal for our TAP program, and it has to do with phonemic awareness. And our score, and I know these numbers will just kind of seem ambiguous at the time, but our fall score was a 152 with relation to phonemic awareness according to our NWA test. Our goal for where we wanted to be at this point in the year was to be at a 162. Well, let me tell you, we just haven't analyzed the winter scores, and we're at a 171, which actually beat the spring goal, which gave us the perfect problem of setting a new spring goal, which made me beam with pride for our students, but then as well as our teachers, because that shows that our instruction's right on target. So proud of them. Their scores with math and language according to our latest scorecard are up, and discipline referrals are down, so good combination at Hornet Park Elementary. For our families and our community, coming up on March 15th, from 6:00 to 7:30, we will have our Mother-Son Dance. And so that's an opportunity to come. Boys can bring a special guest and cut a rug that night. And rumor has it that it's a pirate theme, so it's gonna be pretty fun that night. And then finally, for our staff, I would just kind of like to take a moment to pat the Hornet Park staff on the back for their level of professionalism with the TAP program. And I know many of us have spoken over and over about the TAP program, but here in two weeks will be the fourth set of outside visitors that have come to visit a Hornet Park Cluster Meeting, which those are our weekly professional development meetings. So our staff and our TLT, that's our TAP leadership team, have kind of become a resource for others, and I think that's a wonderful opportunity for Beech Grove to kind of shine, in a way, but then also to learn from others as they come and visit. And then something I just found out today, so this is hot off the press. In mid-April, a team from the Department of Education will be coming, along with probably Dr. Tony Bennett, to Hornet Park and observing a cluster meeting. So that'll be a wonderful opportunity for us to share the great things going on in Beech Grove. All right, well, we have many things of which we are proud at Hornet Park, but our Student of the Month is the icing on our cake. So let me introduce a little sweetie to you this month. I would like to introduce Mr. RJ Moore. So RJ, would you come up, please? Right up here, sweetheart. And let me just show you, RJ has two pages. So we're gonna pick some of the highlights, okay? All these kind words people had to say about you, RJ. From Mrs. Weisenbach, who is his preschool teacher, "I had RJ in preschool, and my favorite things about him were his enthusiasm for everything we did in class and his kind heart. He was always the first to try to comfort someone else who was having an upset or a bad day." From his speech teacher, "RJ has made such wonderful progress with his speech and language skills. I'm just so proud of him. He works so hard and tries his best. He's very eager to learn and he wants to do a good job. He's even proud of himself for always finishing his speech homework, and I just absolutely love working with him." That's for Mrs. Stoltz. We're gonna have to skip a few, or I'd be up here all night. From Mrs. Jennings, she says, "My contact with RJ is with Kids Club, and he definitely makes the most out of our limited time that we get to spend together. He always has a story to tell, and you might as well just pull up a seat and be prepared to listen and enjoy, because his stories are always entertaining and will keep you on the edge of that seat. His face lights up when he is acknowledged for his accomplishments, whether it be an academic success or just a compliment about being a good Hornet. He's a delight to be around. His shining face and personality light up our halls at Hornet Park." And then finally, from Mrs. McDimit, "RJ is just a pleasure to work with. He works very hard to do the right thing, and he follows our school rules. He's kind to his classmates and enjoys being a helpful hand to his teachers and peers." So I'd like to present Hornet Park's Student of the Month, RJ Moore.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Craig Buckler. I'm the principal at Central. Every month this year, I've been kind of talking about a different group of people at Central, and I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on Mrs. Probus and her discussion of TAP. Tonight, I want to focus specifically on the Related Arts teachers at Central and kind of talk about how they are participating in the TAP process. We have an art teacher, a physical education teacher, a music teacher, and an applied technology teacher who aren't typically teaching reading. And all four of those people are now doing that, each with one third-grade class once a week for 10 to 15 minutes. Each week in their cluster meetings with Mrs. Turle, their learning strategies, and they're a week behind. So we teach the general ed teachers the strategy, and then the next week, the Related Arts teachers learn it so that they can reinforce that with those students one more time. So they're being really, really flexible. So I wanted to recognize them for taking this time out of their content area that's really forced them to get outside their areas of comfort and gives them a different perspective for working with the students. In fact, one of them, two weeks ago, the boys and girls were a little concerned that they were not participating in physical education. And Mr. Bush Collins sat them down and said, "For 10 minutes, we're gonna learn how to read, because for the rest of your life, you need to know how to learn how to read." And it really kind of put in perspective for them. They did the strategy, went into the gym, and got back on with the regular lessons. So I want to recognize Oscar Bush Collins, Ashley Weishon, who's our Applied Technology teacher, Rosie Klein in music, and Janay Sutton in art, for working extra hard to help the students reach these levels of comprehension. I appreciate their time, their effort, and their flexibility. One more thank you this month goes out to Trudy Wolf, who's the homeschool advisor at Central for organizing the annual visit of Terry Hall. He presents the body safety program at all three schools: at Hornet Park, and then Central, and at South Grove Intermediate. On the evening of the 15th, Mr. Hall presented to almost 50 parents at Central, which was the largest group he said he'd had in over a year and a half. And he travels all across everywhere. I can't remember how many places he said he's been, but he has spoken to hundreds of thousands of students. So I think that really speaks to our Beech Grove community. So I wanted to recognize Mrs. Wolf for pulling that all together. He gives three 30-minute sessions and just goes from school to school to school. So this year, he started at Hornet Park, went to South Grove, and finished up at Central. We already have a schedule for the 13th of February next year, because he books a year in advance, so we have to make sure that we get him on the books. So I want to thank Mrs. Wolf for organizing this program. Finally, I want to recognize Morgan Woodruff. Morgan's gonna come on up. She is our January Student of the Month. "Morgan is a second grader in Mrs. Duncan's class. Mrs. Duncan states Morgan is a great student to have in her room. She is so helpful to Mrs. Duncan and to the other students. She often reminds Mrs. Duncan of things she forgets about, but is very respectful when doing so. Even though she struggles sometimes, she never gives up and is not afraid or embarrassed to ask for help. Morgan helps other students in a loving way, and they are very accepting of her help. Great job this year, Morgan." Mrs. Bayless reports that Morgan is an excellent and model student. She always works hard. She is helpful not only to her teachers, but to any student who needs help. She is so proud of Morgan. Mrs. Sutton, our teacher, says Morgan is one of those rare and special students that will remain on her mind for a very long time. She is always respectful, always a good listener, always a huge help, and is always the one I know that she can trust and count on as a teacher. She says, "That's a lot of 'always,' but these are very true statements. Her greatest wish is that the others around her would use her as a standard for what students should look like." It is apparent from these comments that Morgan demonstrates all the qualities of our very best students, and I'm pleased and proud to present Morgan Woodruff, our January Student of the Month.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm kind of gonna go back in time to last Friday afternoon. South Grove celebrated Black History Month with a fabulous program. Mr. Tim Holmes and Mrs. Karen Marchuk, two of our brand-new teachers at South Grove, came to me in October and said, "Do you care if we put a program together for Black History Month?" And I said, "Absolutely. Have at it." And boy, what a program it was. The show began with the 5th grade choir under the direction of Addie Alkayer, singing some songs, and then the 6th grade choir under the direction of Scott Bradford, sang some songs. And I think it was about the third song that the tears started. Just touching songs that both groups sang. The program then moved into an iMovie presentation with history, Black history being shown, and onstage acting by some of our South Grove students. And then the show ended with a dance montage, highlighting Black musical artists through the ages, with South Grove students dancing and performing. And yes, I even did the moonwalk onto the stage to help celebrate. So what started out as, and the best way I could describe it, is the seriousness of Black history in early America and then ended with the celebration of what life is now for them. So it was just a very touching program. And as one teacher put it, she emailed afterwards to thank Mr. Holmes and Mrs. Marchuk for their production, and she said, "I cried, I laughed, and I clapped my hands with joy." It was a very powerful afternoon for our students. So I want to thank Tim Holmes and Karen Marchuk for all of their hard work and dedication to this presentation of Black history and to the student actors, dancers, and singers for staying after school, sometimes two to three nights a week until 5:30, to put on this show. So it was wonderful. And a reminder, and I'm glad nobody had touched on this yet, Applied Skills iStep testing begins March 5th, which is right around the corner. So I wanted to remind parents to make sure that their students received plenty of sleep and that they got a good breakfast. And if they aren't going to get a good breakfast at home, they can come to South Grove and Central and Hornet Park, because we all participate in universal breakfasts, so children get free breakfasts at our schools. So if they're like my son, they can eat at home and then eat again a half hour later at school and get their belly full, so their brains are ready to go. So just make sure your children get sleep and food, and we will take care of the rest. Morgan Schneider, come on up, please. Morgan Schneider is South Grove Student of the Month. They had two Morgans. This is Morgan. Morgan is the daughter of Angela Pappas and Rachel and James Schneider. And Ms. Piper, Morgan's 6th grade teacher, feels that Morgan is an outstanding student. She is successful at almost everything she sets her mind to. She works diligently to accomplish all tasks set before her and is willing to take on more responsibilities. She is extremely helpful with her peers and adults and is very respectful to those around her. Mr. Crook says that Morgan is an excellent student who is very responsible. The only problem is that she's a Redskins fan. He's a Broncos fan, you know, Mr. Crook is. I thought that was funny. I had to throw that in. Mrs. Mann, Morgan's 4th grade teacher, says that even in 4th grade, Morgan's maturity and intellect was far superior to her peers. She was a studious girl, and still is, and a respectful young lady. Morgan won the South Grove School Spelling Bee as a 4th grader, and then she won again as a 6th grader in January. And she went on to represent South Grove in the Marion County South Spelling Bee. Couple weeks ago, she placed 3rd overall. That allows her to move on to the Marion County Regional Spelling Bee in late March, and I think from there could possibly get a bid to go to Washington, DC. So we want to congratulate Morgan for her accomplishments and wish her the best of luck in the Spelling Bee coming up and also when she goes to Beech Grove Middle School next year, because she is surely going to be missed. Very proud of Morgan Schneider.
Would like to congratulate Morgan on her Spelling Bee accomplishments. She can come over to Beech Grove Middle School and continue Devin Hunter's work from this year. He's a 7th grader, and he placed 4th in the Marion County South Regional Spelling Bee. And that also qualifies him to move on to the county-wide tournament. So we want to congratulate him for that accomplishment, and that is March 20th. Also, like to thank Mrs. Pfister and Mrs. Wiley for heading up the Spelling Bee efforts at Beech Grove Middle School. Also like to recognize our 8th grade Academic Pursuit Team. They, for a second year in a row, placed in the Elite Eight in Marion County Tournament, and that's 22 middle schools. Unfortunately, they fell to the same team this year as they did last year. So hopefully, next year, we'll eclipse that team or get in a different bracket. Just to remind the board, our TAP strategy is, for the second cycle, is a reading strategy. And our teachers are working hard, and our students are working hard to implement that. And we'll be moving on to our Cycle 3 goal, which will be a vocabulary goal. All of those are directly related to our school-wide goal, which is to improve reading and language arts scores on iStep. Next week, we have our annual Elite Eight Wrestling Tournament. That's an all-day tournament. Encourage everyone to stop by and watch our wrestlers compete against some of the state's best at the middle school level. Last week, we had our Triple Duel. The girls' basketball team competed in conference. And two weeks from now, we have our Bee Gees Swim Invitational. And to piggyback a little bit off of Mrs. Reed, just a reminder, and the same exact tips as Mrs. Reed had for iStep, we'll be doing that the same timeframe next week. Tuesday and Wednesday will be 7th and 8th grade, and Thursday will be 7th grade social studies. And like to recognize our staff and students again for working really hard to improve that school-wide goal. And now for our Student of the Month, Elizabeth. The Titan Team would like to recognize Elizabeth Terry as the February Student of the Month. Elizabeth exhibits many qualities that make her a standout student and deserving of recognition for the Beech Grove School community. From Mrs. Pfister, "Elizabeth's grades in language arts have been near perfect. She earned straight A's in both IS and RL all year. Her work goes above and beyond the requirements and could be used as an example to others. She comes to class every day ready to learn and with a positive attitude. She's a smiley, friendly, and a pleasure to have in class." From Mr. Walton, "Elizabeth always has her work completed. She volunteers answers and helps others around her. She has a friendly disposition. Elizabeth is always on time and prepared." From Mr. Abbott, "Elizabeth is an outstanding student with tremendous organizational skills and work ethic. She often volunteers during class and goes beyond requirements by doing all extracurricular work. We are also proud of her participation in extracurricular activities." From Mr. Wynton, although Mr. Wynton is not a Titan teacher, Elizabeth is a part of his algebra class. She makes great grades in math and comes prepared every day. She's always friendly and polite, and she was also a productive member of the 8th grade academic team. From Mr. Carney, "Elizabeth participated in the Marching Hornet State Runner-Up Ensemble in 2011. She's also a very active member of concert and pep band, completing in the ISSMA solo ensemble and receiving a silver rating in Group 2, as well as playing in the high school pep band at several home basketball games throughout the season. We are proud to have Elizabeth as part of the Titan Team and look forward to what she will accomplish the rest of the year." Congratulations.
Good evening. Steve Cox, Principal Beech Grove High School. Couple things that are going on at the high school to tell you about is last week, we started deploying the tablets. Our seniors got them last Thursday and Friday. Today, our freshman AM team got them. On Wednesday, we're gonna give them out to the juniors, and Friday, the sophomores. And the next Wednesday, the rest of the afternoon PM, seeing a 9th grade house class. So we're excited about getting the tablets out to everybody. I know Michelle, and Ellen, and Tim have just done a tremendous job of working hard and getting everything ready to go. Evidently, Phil's done a great job, because 3 hours ago, if you'd looked in this room, there's computers everywhere and tablet boxes and all kinds of things here, because we use this room to distribute the tablets. Also, Joe, Grant, and Mary have been working really hard to make sure that the network is up and running right, so things are going well. It's taken about 15 minutes, sometimes 20 minutes per group of 25 students to go through, get their tablets, and get back to class. So, you know, everything's running pretty smooth, you know, at least today. And hopefully, it'll be that way for the rest of the week. So by the end of next week, we'll have all students at the high school with their tablets. So it's been great. Everybody's been waiting for them, and now we can implement them and get them into their classrooms. Kevin Banks, this past Saturday, took a team to the Science Olympiad competition at Butler. It was a regional competition. Out of 23 teams, or 23 events at 14 different schools, we had two first-place finishes in thermodynamics, Kim Aldrich and Megan McNulty, and also in the Sounds of Music with Drake Lawson and Megan West. They did an outstanding job, and they, you know, Kevin, he just loves Science Olympiad. So we'll move on for other competitions. This Thursday, our ICC is our conference. Academic Super Bowl is gonna be at Redder High School. Again, that's Thursday, March 1st. And we're looking forward to that. It's also, we'll have more competitions even here at the high school as we get into April. The Qantas Club of Indianapolis, they awarded 25 students the 2012 Abe Lincoln Scholarship Awards. We were lucky. We have a student, Kayla Lawson, was one of the 25 recipients for the Circle of Valor Award. That's for students that went through overwhelming difficulties as they're grown up and continue to succeed. And she has done that, so we're very thankful and proud of Kayla for what she's done. Coming up, we have Learn More Indiana photo shoots coming up on March 14th. They're gonna come to the high school and interview two students from each class, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, to basically show off Beech Grove High School, both magazines. We're looking forward to that. Winter Athletic Awards Program is also on the 14th at 7 o'clock. From the 15th to the 17th, that same week, we're having our Spring Musical. Mr. Bush has been working very hard. We have several students involved with Annie. And again, that starts on Thursday, the 15th, and it runs at 7 o'clock. And also on the 17th, which is a Saturday, we're doing something new. We're doing the Riley Dance Marathon to raise money for Riley Hospital. And that'll be from 9:00 to 4:00. So come on over and shake a leg here at the high school on that Saturday afternoon. And then also on the 23rd of March, we're doing a celebration of success for the winter sports. We're also doing a community carnival and then a basketball game between our students and our faculty to raise money for the yearbook and then also for Coach English. And so that's a little thing, a little few of the ideas that are going on are things that are happening here at the high school. I too want to say thank you to our staff. Our teachers are doing a great job of implementing the Freyer Model in reference to vocabulary and context clues, I think. And as I bring Shelby up here, she's probably heard that word, Freyer Model, over and over in every classroom for about the last 3 weeks. So Shelby, come on up. Our Student of the Month is Shelby Foltz. And Shelby, I'm very delighted to recognize Shelby as our Student of the Month. She's a role model for every student in Beech Grove City Schools. She has a great positive attitude. She's a tremendous work ethic. She does everything she's asked to do, and she's very dedicated in whatever she tries to do. She is the daughter of Roger and Jennifer Foltz, and Jenny couldn't be here tonight. She's going to attend University of Indianapolis and study nursing. For the class of 2012, she has a GPA of 3.8, and she ranks 4th in her class. As I go down through all these things, there's several, but I'm gonna read them all. She's been involved with our varsity football, varsity volleyball, and bats. She could do that, too, but varsity volleyball and basketball. She's been a captain of the league for 2 years. She's worked in the girls' traveling basketball teams, coached in 4th grade. She also is at Beechtree as an interim preschool teacher. She was awarded the I DARE Year Award for her grades, leadership, and character. She's been on the honor roll all 4 years: National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Academic Gold Conference in both volleyball and basketball, All Conference in volleyball and basketball, Marion County team in the volleyball team, all Marion County honorable mention in basketball, Most Valuable Player in both of those sports. And she was awarded the DAR Good Citizens Award here this year. So we're very happy with Shelby. Shelby exemplifies the phrase "sacrifice, dedication, and heart," both academically and athletically, in whatever endeavors that she pursues. I selected Shelby to present Beech Grove High School at the IHSAA Student Leadership Conference this past spring because I believe she exhibits every positive character that we would like to portray in a Beech Grove High School student. She's been an outstanding leader and a student athlete for 4 years at Beech Grove High School. We're gonna miss her, but she knows she's gonna be a great nurse when she gets done with the University of Indianapolis. So Shelby Foltz, our Student of the Month.
Okay, we are going to have Dr. Kaiser talk about our 1028 hearing on Applied Life Science initiatives.
Thank you very much. This evening, we were very proud to present really 2 parts or 2 different presentations on Applied Life Science. Kevin Banks, our long-term, top-notch chairperson, along with Mr. Cox, have really been talking for a number of years about, you know, what can we do to really take our high school to the next level? We're good in our performing arts, both visual and performing. We've got strong academics, but what's really our niche? Well, as we looked at our staff, one of the things that was really a shining star was our science department. They do so many great things. And this summer, we sent 18 kids to Purdue Science Camp. And I think that was the really catalyst for where we're going right now. From that adventure to Purdue and ongoing discussion, we decided to really beef up and add to our science department with Applied Life Science. So at Christmas time, we added 2 science teachers, and we really started exploring what courses can we offer that we're not offering? And the presentation you're about to see is an emphasis on Applied Life Science using the Agri-science Foundation for offering new courses at Beech Grove High School starting next fall, along with starting a core course at Beech Grove Middle School next fall. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Collins to talk about the new Applied Life Science initiative at Beech Grove High School and Beech Grove Middle School.
Dr. Hammack and myself, we're gonna try to take a school perspective. And then after we're finished, we'll see more of a global of how it affects society and we get a different from Mr. Bruce By. So we have kind of 2 perspectives here. This is more the educational perspective. Indiana Department of Public Instruction is trying to determine how we can get kids to stay in school longer and graduate. And through their emphasis on the graduation rate and the ranking of schools really according to graduation rate, that was 1 method. But another method that they kind of researched is the way we can get kids to stay in school longer maybe is to make the courses more relevant to their lives. I don't know about you, but I've taken courses where I saw no purpose for it whatsoever. And I've also taken courses where I've never used the material that I've gained. This is an approach to try to make it relevant to students, where they want to learn something because they know when they get out of school, they're gonna use it. And what they've devised is what's called pathways. And so the Department of Public Instruction has asked schools to try to explore pathways to make it more interesting to the students. So let me give you a little idea of what a school might look like. Now, a lot of things we're showing you are planning documents. We can switch them around and move them around. So let's look a little bit at what pathways are. First of all, there are 11 pathways that Department of Public Instruction came up with. The problem with 11 pathways is that a small school like us just can't have courses in 11 different ways. The first thing you'll notice is there's 12 here. Dr. Kaiser likes balance, so we took 1 of them and divided it into 2, so it would be nice and balanced. So it's impossible really for us to offer that many courses. We wouldn't have enough students nor teachers to do it. So what we have to devise is a way that we can divide them into maybe just 4 different areas. So we're gonna call those academies. Now, as I said, this may not be what we come up with. This is a planning document. But if we divide in 4 academies, maybe we can offer courses that are relevant to students so when they get out of school, they can maybe get a job? Or maybe they'll find out they don't like this, and that's a success story in itself. If you find that you don't like something and move to something else, that is a revelation in itself. So I think we might be able to offer courses in 4 different areas. The first area here would be more the performing arts or the technical or the stage production. That would be the yellow. In the blue, that's more of the public service type of thing, if you want to be a teacher, or if you want to be a doctor, or the girl that was here who wanted to be a nurse. Those are the types of courses that they might be interested in taking. The next area, it's the life science, and this is the area we're gonna be talking about. And the last area is more the business. The reason we picked life science is we have a lot of people who will give us a dice and get us started. So what we're gonna concentrate on is how could we develop this green area and offer some courses to kids that are relevant? Now, they're not, they're still gonna take the required courses. It's just they have electives, and instead of taking electives, a lot of them say, "I don't know what to take." don't know what to take. Take one that might give you something when you get out of school. Two things we'd like to see the kids have. If they want to get college credit, that would be wonderful because if they get college credit, then I might go to college. Or if let's say you got a certificate or a technical, something that you could go for training and all say, this is what I earned in high school, maybe I can get a job that way. So this is kind of the setup with it. I'll let Dr. Hammack start from there and I'll push buttons.
We're totally tag teaming this thing. So, right, we're really interested in sort of building capacity in our students and by taking sort of a focused and intentional sort of method to do that, we're really feeling like life, life science is the way for Beach Grove City Schools to begin, not only for the reasons that the kids certainly just reviewed, but for the fact that we're a part of this life science corridor. You're going to hear that a lot in the media and we are sort of immersed in life sciences just in our backyard. And what a wonderful opportunity for us to kind of maximize that sort of geographical location on top of just kind of a beautiful sort of, we just have a wonderful foundation for these teachers, educators already here at our middle school as well as our high school. This is, we won't spend too much time on this, but this is the Department of Education sort of map for what courses would lead to sort of cluster areas in agribusiness, life science, which is our focus, as well as these horticultural careers. So the Department of Ed has already mapped out quite a bit of this, but what I really enjoy about it is that we can have our own sort of local spin on what we feel really matches our boys and girls here in Beach Grove. Kit talked about the pathway, and the Department of Ed is really emphasizing sort of what they're calling a completer. That's a word that's not only going to be used here at the high school sort of proper, but in our technical schools as well. We're really wanting students, once they sort of start an area, they can have the ability to change that area, but what we want for them, once they graduate, is to actually complete a program so that upon graduation, they can have potentially a certification under their belt where they're able to go to an employer or to a secondary institution and say, listen, not only did I take courses in this area, but I actually have a certificate to, to sort of prove that competence. And so that's something that you'll be hearing quite frequently as far as the Department of Ed and kind of direction is concerned. We still very much have not abandoned Core 40 at all by having an emphasis on different sort of pathways and academies. In fact, it's really enhancing what is already in place. So Kit mentioned it earlier, and it does bear repeating. We are not sort of breaking away from a traditional curriculum by any means. We're enhancing the opportunities and options for the boys and girls. Dual credits was mentioned as well. You're so good. There, this is just, you know, when I was in high school, the option to be able to get college credit, if I had that opportunity, you better believe I would have done everything that I could have to, to make that happen. Now that it's a reality, for goodness sake, we want to have that option available for all of our boys and girls who want to seek that avenue. And there's just lots of wonderful institutions in the area who want to work at the high school level and want to be here. It's a, it's a wonderful thing for them as well. So it's really mutually beneficial in that regard. So this is where we're really wanting to kick things off with this Applied Life Science pathway that we're super excited about the other pathways, but we feel like we have to start somewhere and Applied Life Science is, is the way to go. We really feel like this is just going to sort of maximize multiple opportunities for boys and girls. Looking at careers, you can't turn on the news lately without some anchor or some news reporter commenting on the fact that businesses need employees who have skills in these areas. And the beautiful piece of the puzzle is that it's not just the highly trained. These institutions need a diversity of folks who have skill sets that might be dependent on that high school diploma and those that might be super advanced degrees from Purdue. So it's really neat that we are in this region where our boys and girls, no matter what their skill set sort of might be, there are options for them out there. And again, right, so possible careers, we're talking, you know, some, some careers that might be very, very able to be accessed right after graduation to those where you might need a PhD in order to perform them. So we just think that that's an incredible thing that our kiddos could sort of leave as seniors and maybe have some of these foundations already under their belt. Right, so these are some of the courses that we're really studying. Like Kit said, everything is in the planning process at this point, but we really feel like these are courses that could be viable here in Beach Grove, and we have folks who want and are looking forward to sort of making these courses happen. Hands-on, boy, we've talked to you guys about that a lot, and it cannot be dismissed, sort of the power of boys and girls who are able to engage in their work and what can happen as a result of that engagement. Life sciences, just by its nature, is absolutely hands-on. So it is inviting kids to be engaged in the work and really sitting at a desk and just sort of listening and learning, it is just not sort of insipatico with what applied life sciences are all about. You have to be out there doing and sort of getting dirty, which is really cool. Discover those career interests again. We just cannot sort of reinforce enough how wonderful it is that Beach Grove High School could be the place where we're empowering students to be able to, upon graduation from the high school or upon graduation from college, be able to walk in and get a job wherever they want to be. Leadership development too. So Mr. By will certainly be talking to you a little bit more about opportunities for leadership within applied life sciences as far as opportunities to engage in arenas like FFA. But we also see it as something that we want, we want applied life sciences to be like super cool at the high school. So we want for kids to step up and be leaders in this work and make science cool again. Not that it ever wasn't, Mr. Banks. So, and also strengthen confidence, right? So our students are really going to become knowledgeable in this work, and they're going to be using words and thinking through processes and engaging in material that's really going to sort of boost what, what they know. Very unlike a traditional sort of classroom, they're going to be out there in the work so that naturally that confidence will be boosted. And now I will turn it to Mr. Collins.
So if you look at how we can take courses that lead to a career or a possible career, these are the different clusters that we would think about in life science. And we also have some evaluation tools that we use to get, show what the kids' strengths are and also their interests to combine the two, get them started in one of these pathways. Again, if they don't like it, make it so they can switch to a different pathway. If they like it, it should give purpose to their education. In the life science, if you're going to look from an educational point of view, in the first, the technical courses, these are all the courses that we could offer in life science. And as I said, there's no way we can offer all of those. So we're going to have to pick and choose the ones that, first of all, the kids are interested in, and secondly, the ones that our teachers are qualified to teach. Also, we talk a lot about, about dual courses. If you look at the bottom, I have the different colors here. All of those in the various colors are dual courses and the universities that will give the credit for those courses. That, you know, more than half of them there are dual credit. So if we can get kids who will, or students who will get credit, the likelihood of going on is so much greater than just stopping after their years of high school. Also, another thing we need to mention is it doesn't have to stop just here. There are a lot of facilities and a lot of courses at C9 that they just dovetail into. So I could see where they might take some courses here and also then take some courses at C9 because they have the equipment and some of the more technical things that we can't offer here. So it's be a complete program for these students, not just the local school district. Here's what the courses would kind of look like. And as I said, the courses we're talking about are, are not the required courses, they're the electives. So as a freshman, you probably will see that a lot of them are just the regular courses that they would take, but we also would have the introduction to Agriculture, Science, and Business. So that's kind of the introductory course. Then they could have an Applied Life Science elective as sophomores, as juniors, and as seniors. What types of electives? Well, the first one was the agricultural science, was the introductory course. So there's one course. If we offered, let's say, an animal science course, that would be a second course, and maybe a foods course. So that would kind of get us started. So we're kind of looking, do we have kids who might be interested in those areas? And more importantly, do we have teachers who can teach it? Because we can't go out for all this dual credit if we don't have qualified teachers to teach the courses. So that kind of gives you an idea of what a class. And you'll notice there's some empty spots that more electives could be placed. One of the courses we talked about is the introductory course. That one tells you, you know, it's a high school course and that you can earn credits for it. So that's one of them. The animal science course is another one. We have, again, have teachers qualified. This one, I like because we have a teacher qualified to teach this one. This can be offered as dual credit, and we have a teacher who can teach it. So there's one that we can do. The problem now you have to put together is do we have the kids to sign up for the classes? And do we have qualified teachers? If we don't have qualified teachers, your two choices are not, or three choices, don't offer the course or get teachers on staff now qualified or to hire people in order to teach those. So that's kind of the different processes that we can go through. Also, our kids can go into various workshops during the summer. And I think you've heard a lot about when they went to Purdue last year. So there are a lot of opportunities, especially in this life science area because the, especially Purdue is so interested in Ivy Tech, in those areas that, that's kind of the way we chose this area because there's so many resources. Once we have this kind of working, we can then look at another pathway and expand those.
That's it.
Well, what I'd like to do is kind of transition to another presentation, then open up for questions at that time if that would work for more. At this time, I'd like to introduce Bruce By. Bruce and his wife Elsa have lived in Beach Grove for 37 years, and I think the majority of the board members have met Bruce at one time or another. Their two children, both graduated from the city of Beach Grove Schools. Bruce, he's done quite a bit of work with Manuel's High School Life Science Program for over 19 years. He started the life, helped start the life science program there and has been on the advisory board for 17 years. It'll be interesting to see what happens with the Manuel program, with the takeover and things like that. But he's also been, he's also helped as a Beach Grove for about 19 years by working with Jim Hensley and Jerry Peters, coordinates the creation of the Beach Grove Education Foundation. They worked on that for almost two years, getting that started. He and his wife also sponsored the $2,000 scholarship given to the top senior male and female scholar athlete. And this last year, they extended the recognition by proving, providing pens to the middle school, to the top 10 scholarly athletes in each of the, I'm sorry, to the, for the top 10 athletes in the four high schools, and he's also working with the middle school on a program too. His first job was a manager of economics and marketing research for the Country Mark Co-op. And then he went to work for Elanco, the agricultural division of Eli Lilly, where he retired after 28 years. His last position was being in charge of the marketing research for beef and dairy products on a worldwide basis. He continues to be involved in Beach Grove City Schools in this area. Now, I, I read that to you, but, but I want to tell you from the heart, we would not be where we are today without Bruce. He has been a, a stinging hornet. I started to say a bulldog, but I think a stinging hornet, I'm really pushing this forward. He has helped us organize things. We sit in this room, gosh, a month ago, five weeks ago, with 30 people from Purdue, Ivy Tech, the Department of Ed, the state of Indiana, and universities, you know, and basically, he's really been a guiding light, getting this to where we are today. And it's important that we hear Bruce talk about, you know, not only the life science part, but I asked him to concentrate what's next for our kids. You know, it's great if they take an animal science course. And, and as Kit was talking, we're only going to offer three courses this fall. But then as we move forward, we have just a, really exciting courses for kids to take. And a key component of this is the funding comes from the state. We're going to offer in the middle school introduction to agriculture, natural resources, and, and food science. And we will get from the state over $75,000 due pay for the staff member, maybe probably a staff member and a half. For every one of these courses that we offer, if they're taught by a licensed agricultural teacher, we get funding from the state of Indiana. So the program really pays for itself. And today's tough economic times, that's important. And why are we taking so much time tonight? This is part of our marketing plan for all the parents that are out there and all the grandparents and, and just community members. We want you to know the exciting things taking place in Beach Grove. So our presentation's a little bit longer tonight, but we're excited about the opportunities. And, and again, I personally just want to thank Bruce for his effort and the continued leadership he's going to have in this area. So Bruce, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. When Dr. Kaiser asked me to be able to say a few words about what's going on with careers in applied life sciences, I thought, well, what better way to do that than to go to the website of a couple of agricultural firms that have their headquarters here in Indianapolis, Dow AgroSciences and Elanco, the division of Lilly, and look at what are the jobs that are posted? And then look at the descriptions of those positions, look at the requirements, and then tie those requirements to the kinds of things that students will be able to learn about when they're in this course. Mr. Collins made the comment earlier, we want to be able to help students associate what they hear in the classroom with reality and preparing them for a position. And it really matches up really nicely. Okay? And so that is kind of what, kind of the overview of what I want to be able to share with you. Now then, as I was right over here and, and going through the, the first part of this, Mr. Cox came to me and said, you know, it might actually help to also comment on the individuals that have been involved, that have been helping, and be able to identify them. I said, Steve, that would take half of my time. He said, I think it'd be a good idea. I said, so that's what I'm going to do. Okay. So first of all, as Dr. Kaiser mentioned, on January 13th, on the morning of January 13th, we had a meeting right here in this room. And I had been, I talked with the individuals at Purdue, and I said, what is it as we start this program that we can do to really get this off to the best start? And their comment was, get all of the key decision makers around the table from the very beginning so everybody knows what's going on. Start it off right, and that way everybody's involved. Okay? So here's basically, here's who we had on, at that January 13th meeting, and here's who have been involved since then. Individuals from Indiana Department of Education, Chris Kaufman; Indiana Department of Agriculture, Steve Hickey; Purdue University Department of Education, Dan Gotchak, Jerry Peters, Alan Talbert, and Levon Esters; the National FFA Association, Larry Gosin; the Indiana FFA Association; the state officers. Each one of the seven state officers came here to Beach Grove High School, and they split up and they gave presentations to the students as they were, had the orientation with the guidance counselors. They also came and met with the parents from the incoming freshmen. We had this display at, at each one of those. The display is actually from the National FFA Association. They had old pictures, so the new pictures are actually from the Indiana State FFA Association. And they also made the banner just for Beach Grove. Okay? So that's compliments of those two organizations. The individuals sitting around this table. Dr. Kaiser, Tom, Phil, Laura, Robin worked on, on putting together the, the brochure. Then also at the high school, Steve Cox, Kevin Banks, Matt English, Donna Hurt, Karen Matthews, Kathy Lowe, Wiley Craft. Wiley Craft and his TV production put together the commercial. And they also did interviews with the state association officers, and that is being put together, so it can also be broadcast. So you have the TV production students as well as individuals from Ivy So you have the TV production students, as well as individuals from Ivy Tech and Vincent. So that's who's been involved. Did I miss anybody, Steve?
Mr. Collins.
And Mr. Collins, I'm sorry. He wasn't at the, no. And also, Tom, Mr. Gerhardt, was at the meeting on the 13th. I think that's all. Thank you. As we look at what's going on with this program, this is intended as an interactive question. All right. When I say agriculture, what is it that comes to mind? What one word comes to mind when I say agriculture?
Farming.
Farming, okay? Farming. So all of a sudden, we have a program that has the potential to all of a sudden think our students are going to be farmers? I don't think so. Okay? Now then, let's go to the first slide. First of all, I gave you the handout for Purdue University. And this handout lists 45 different majors in their College of Agriculture. How many of those directly relate to production ag or farming? The answer's five, okay? And what is happening is that we have only about 1% of our total population directly involved in farming. And yet, we have about 15% of all the critical jobs that relate to agriculture. You look at Dow AgroSciences, you look at Elanco, the ag division of Lilly, they need qualified applicants who understand plant science and animal science. They also see an advantage of working with programs here in the Indianapolis community, because what they have found is, they hire individuals, have them on board for a couple of years, when they take that first promotion, all of a sudden, they find out that they do or do not like it, and those students end up quitting the company and going back home. Going back to North Carolina, going to Montana, going to Kansas. Well, what happens if the students that are originally hired for those companies are here? And it may be that first assignment is in a state away from here, but when they come back to the home office, guess what? They're close to the parents, they're close to the grandparents, and it's important to their lives to be close to family. So you have Dow AgroSciences and Elanco that really do want to promote this kind of program here in Indianapolis, okay? Now, next question for you. 1988, FFA. Prior to 1988, what did FFA stand for?
Future Farmers.
Future Farmers of America. Why did they change the name? They changed the name to the National FFA Organization. Why in 1988 did they change the name?
We're getting farmers.
Guess what? They're not, the students in the organization are not going to be farmers. Thank you, Beth. Exactly. Exactly. And even in 1988, 2/3 of the students in the organization were not living on a farm. They were rural, non-farm, or living in cities. The FFA is a growing organization. It has 540,000 student members. It's growing. It's growing every year. Why is it growing? Because it offers information to students to help them be successful. You look at the top of your cup, and the cup says, FFA, Premier Leadership, Personal Growth, and Career Success. That's what they stand for. And that's why students have become part of this organization. So you have roughly 540,000 students in FFA. Over 50,000 of those actually live in the city. Of the 25 major metropolitan areas in the United States, 18 of those metropolitan areas have an ag education program in their city, including Indianapolis, Manuel High School. So you have over 50,000 members of FFA living in the city. I wish this program were here when my son and daughter were here. They would have been involved with it. It would have helped them prepare. It would have helped them learn, okay? So those were two clarifications I wanted you to be aware of. So the next slide, there's over 300 different career opportunities that we have. Those are the organizations. By the way, I gave you the handout, so you can kind of follow along if you want. Then on this area, what I did was to go to Dow AgroSciences' website. And if you have this publication that says job postings in the upper right-hand corner, find it, Judy. Good. Okay. There at the top, where it says A, or there in the left-hand margin, it says Agriculture Jobs in Indianapolis at Dow AgroSciences. It has a little paragraph describing what's going on with Dow AgroSciences. Then in the middle of the page, with the B, it says results, 25 different positions. Right now, today, those 25 jobs are available for someone who meets the qualifications. And so you look at some of those descriptions. The first one is biologist. The second one is global competitive intelligence analyst. The fourth one, molecular biology technician, and looking at trait genetics and technologies, and that's in research and development. They have a seed company. They're looking at putting different desirable traits in those seeds. They need plant geneticists, okay? So then the next area, human resource risk assessor. Next one, analytical technologies group leader. Next one relating to government regulations. And then another one with mycogen seeds, and another on tax administrator, DAS is Dow AgroScience, finance job. So all of a sudden, you have all of these areas. They're running a business, and they need to have people that are familiar with agriculture, okay? So then you go to page two, and page two is on the back of page one. What I did was to pull off the description of the biologist. So again, this is for Dow AgroSciences. And in the description, what I wanted to do with the arrows, you notice I have arrows there in the margin? What that arrow signifies is that those are areas that if students at Beach Grove want to be involved in this program, they can take those classes, and these are the kinds of things that they will learn in that program, okay? So I put the first one by being able to work as a team. I put the second one, being able to have strong planning and organization skills, and being able to work with complex projects. I put the third one beside communications, knowledge, speaking, and writing, okay? Those are all going to be critical skills for individuals to be successful. Then let's go to page three. Page three is, the reason I put this one in is to show you the range of job requirements that they have. This is for a technician. They have this listed as a person who has their high school diploma or GED can apply for this job, okay? They also have jobs for individuals that have their bachelor's. They also have them for their master's, and they also have them for veterinarians, PhD nutritionists, and consulting veterinarians. But what I did, I said, let's keep it on a reasonable level, let's look at what's going on with high school, bachelor's, and master's, okay? So then I look at page four, the back of that, that's a continuation of that same technician's job. Again, I put arrows beside the areas that they could learn in this program here at Beach Grove. You go to page five. Page five is an associate consultant for marketing. This happens to be in the area where I worked before I left the company. It's in the global beef area. I know these guys. I know what the words stand for, I know what they're doing. And so you look at what's involved, they're putting together a global marketing plan, okay? So why is it that that can tie in with here? If students are involved with the FFA, they actually have one of their career development events, they can put together, have a team, and put together a marketing plan for a hypothetical product, just to be able to learn the process. The thing that's covered in the classes here is the same process that they use at the company, okay? The students here then get an idea as to whether or not they like that or don't like it. They then can go to a college, maybe Purdue, maybe somewhere else, be able to say, hey, I want to be able to concentrate on being able to do that. I figured out in high school, I kind of like that. They also have the possibility in their FFA program to get involved with a sales project, where they have to represent a product. They may look at that and say, I hated it. I don't like it. I don't want to do it. And that itself is informative and helpful, okay? Because when they get out, they don't need to be looking at those kind of jobs. So there are things that are through the FFA that do in fact give them checks to tie in. So there at the bottom of page five, near the bottom, where it says, hey, they have the responsibility to put together a global marketing plan. And then on the back, the second area down, it says to collaborate in projects and implementation with regional and local markets, consultants, marketing research, sales, analytical teams, and they need to deliver value to the customers. With analytical teams, what they're doing is looking at performance standards. OG, performance standards. Businesses have performance standards too, okay? That's what those analytic teams are doing, all right? You're not the Lone Ranger out here trying to be able to comply with performance standards. There's a reason for it, okay? So then we look down into where all those other underlines are. We have towards the middle of that section, the ability to influence across geographies and cultures. Well, then you glance down to the item G, 40% of this job involves international travel. When I worked in that division, I was in South America, I was in Argentina, Brazil, Bogota, Colombia. I was in Europe nine times, I was in Australia. You end up working with people in a variety of cultures, and guess what? You get to help understand where they're coming from and understand how to be effective, all right? Now then, leadership. You don't have to tell me, I'm going to ask you a question, but you're not going to have to answer it. Just write it down if you want to. If I were to say the word leadership, write down one word that describes the result of leadership. What is one word that describes the result of leadership? You may have a perfectly good word. The word that I have in mind is influence, okay? And you look at what goes on here, it says influence without authority. In other words, you are going to be in a position in a company, and you don't have a position superior to the people you're working with. You may be actually at their level or lower than their level. Your assignment and your responsibility is to have an impact and an influence on the decision without you having the direct reporting authority over them. Then you're providing value. And one of the requirements that we have of this is, they need to be able to influence without authority, okay? So then you look at what goes on with this, the green folder, and you look at the four areas that we have involved with that, and one of those areas is in fact leadership development. If leadership is learning to understand what's going on in influence, that's what we want to help our students here at Beach Grove know and understand what they can and should be doing. It will help them have an impact and be effective in businesses, okay? So then we go to skills required, and so I wanted to make the tie between these job descriptions and what's going on. First of all, with each one of those job descriptions, if you look at them, there's going to be skills that are really technical skills. They are learning how to transfer genes into a seed plant. That is a technical skill. So they, students in this program also have the opportunity to learn the foundation of that, because they're going to be learning sciences through applied science and animal science and plant science. But then you have all those other soft skills. And those soft skills is what can make a difference. And that's also what the students can learn in this program. So there really is a connection, as we can see, between what's going on with the requirement for the company and what are we doing in this program. And what we have on the program are those are the headings out of this green folder, okay? So that's where that comes from. Now then, you have your cups. There's the little yellow sheet in the cup, okay? And if you look at the side of the sheet that has the leaf in the lower right-hand corner, up there at the top, it says, what is an applied life science class like? This sheet was actually put together by one of the state officers. A year ago, she was a senior in one of these programs. As we had interaction with the students here at Beach Grove, one of the questions they had was, what am I actually going to do? What will this program be like? And am I going to like it? So I look at the description here, and it says, Applied Life Science Classes Engage Students Through a Variety of Learning Methods, From Labs to Projects. Students Will Work with Plants, Animals, Food, and Other Media to Help Them Learn Through a Hands-On Approach. So that's what, that's why all of a sudden, when we talked with the students, this hands-on approach was one of the things that they said, I like that idea. I want to be able to be more involved. I just don't want to sit there and take notes. I want to be able to have fun, I want to be able to do things, okay? And then you turn it over, and we say, what's going on with the FFA? First of all, in order to be in the FFA, you have to be enrolled in an agriculture education class. So they need to be taken ag ed class, and then the opportunities that they have available for them after being in the FFA relate to assuming leadership positions, being involved in contests, meeting new people, having scholarships available for them, and travel, okay? So with the FFA organization, there are over $30 million in scholarships available to FFA members. And over at Manuel, year after year, we've had students be able to get at least $500 or $1,000 scholarship through the FFA. And they were kind of average students. You start in excelling, you're going to be able to do much better, okay? So we look at areas that are jobs and what is available for the students. This is done by, this is out of federal information. The jobs to the left are those jobs that in the next five years are expected to be growing by 20% or more. The ones on the right are growing between 15% and 18%. There are jobs there that are going to be there, they're currently in short supply, and they need to have qualified applicants. So we go to the next slide, and we take all these 300 jobs and we condense them, and about half of the jobs, 47%, relate to either management or business. And that is an area that will continue to grow. In actually putting together this whole forecast, the only area that they said may have a drop back in actual employment was government services. They were looking at the budget, they were looking at how many people can be employed, they were looking at what's required, and they said, is the government going to be as big in the future as it is now? And they made some assumptions that said, no, that's going to have an impact on some of those jobs, okay? But all those other areas are actually growing. So then we look at the next slide, the estimated shortage of qualified graduates will be a The estimated shortage of qualified graduates will be about a thousand per year. On a regular basis, there are a need for about fifty-four thousand four hundred individuals in agricultural jobs with a four-year college degree. Right now, the bar to the left has Go the other way. Keep on. Uh, it's the other way. It's the other way. Okay, here's the idea. Of those fifty-four thousand four hundred jobs, only about half of those jobs have individuals who have actual agricultural degrees. They are actually being filled in and what they refer to as allied areas. And next slide. So down there on the bottom, the twenty-nine thousand three hundred are actually agricultural and natural resource graduates. They have ag degrees. But there's a demand for fifty-four thousand four hundred. So where are those people coming from? They're coming from allied areas, what they call allied graduates. And now, if you could go to the next one. Those allied graduates down at the bottom are individuals that are majoring in engineering, business schools, biological sciences, so forth. So you end up having individuals, so simply because because there's a shortage and a demand for these areas and not enough ag graduates, they're going to the other schools to get the graduates. Okay? But then that also answers the question. If a student here in Beach Grove is in this program, do they have to go to Purdue and major in agriculture? The answer is absolutely not. They are going to be learning concepts that can apply regardless of what they want to do. So if you have individuals that are currently in these other schools coming in and doing agriculture jobs, heck fire. You can have people who understand basically what's going on in agriculture, and they say, I don't want to do that. Go to whatever college you want to do. And they will do very well because they understand the concepts. Okay, so then we go to the next. So this simply says, they can go to any two- or four-year college that they want, and they can select any area based on what they discovered by their career interests. Career interest is one of those areas that is an advantage of this program. How do they do that? The FFA gives them different chances to try things. Try doing the marketing plan. Try doing the sales program. If they don't like it, don't do it. If they do like it, do it again next year and see if you can do better in the contest. The FFA is set up so that it recognizes achievement. And students like to be recognized. There's fifty-five thousand FFA members that come to Indianapolis for a national convention. It'll be here for one more year, and then it rotates to Louisville. If any of you want to go down to the National FFA Convention, it normally costs to get into the place, even for a one-day pass. I know the people at National FFA. They gave me a display. They will also give me passes to get you into the National FFA Convention if you want to go. So about two months before mid-October, I'm going to be sending you a note saying, do you want to go? Do you want to go on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday during the day? Or do you want to go some evening? Because they have some fantastic speakers that are at Bankers Life?
Fieldhouse.
Fieldhouse. Okay? So you can also get, once you get a pass, you can basically go anywhere you want. Okay? So you can go down and you can see it yourself as to what's going on. So demand for jobs to help feed a hungry world. The numbers, fifty, one hundred, seventy. Fifty, one hundred, seventy. What does that refer to? What that refers to is, by the year 2050, we will need a hundred percent more food, and seventy percent of that will come from implementation or discovered technologies. If we need twice as much food in this world, do we have more land to grow that on? No. No. Land area only actually increased by one percent this last year. And that wasn't really a good thing because they cut down some forests to be able to do it. Because you look at how urban populations have gone out and taken farmland. We're losing farmland in primaries in Indiana. So we're losing land, and by the year 2050, we're supposed to have twice the amount of food? How are we going to do that? Those are opportunities for our students. Okay? Those are the opportunities. And technology is actually defined as what's going on with either practices, products, or genetics. And there's the reference as to where the study is from. And that's also information that Jeff Simmons, who is the president of Elanco's Division, has had major presentations throughout the United States and Europe saying, wake up, folks. We can't throw away technology because we're going to have a hungry world. So we have students, sharp students, being able to discover this. And then all of a sudden, we put it on a shelf because we say, okay, let's put artificial barriers in and prevent us from using it. Okay? That's just part of the social problem that we have to exist. So that's what it is. So you have the importance of looking to the future. And then part of your handout, what you had, was these two publications. And all that is saying is Purdue recognizes what's going on. And those last two slides are actually the highlights of saying, that's what we have to do to feed a hungry world and have twice as amount of food in the year 2050. So Kit, if we could go ahead and go to the last summary, page one. So we come to the end of the overview. And what I've been able to talk with you about is to say, understand how broad agriculture really is. Understand that FFA helps members be able to develop primary leadership, personal growth, and career success. We've looked at job postings. We've made the tie between those postings and what students will be able to do in the Beach Grove Applied Science, Life Sciences Program. We look at the demand for some jobs growing by over twenty percent. We recognize that some of the, many of the jobs are going to be in the area of management and business. There's going to be a shortage. There is a shortage now of qualified graduates. There's going to continue to be a shortage. You look at what's going on with students here. They can use this as a tool. They don't have the requirement. If they don't want to major in this area, they don't have to. We have to be prepared for the future to in fact understand how to feed a hungry world and a hungry nation. And Purdue Extension and Purdue Research are actually helping to prepare for that. What questions do you have?
Well, let me make a statement. I think what we presented tonight is the coursework, the academies. And hopefully now you just saw the rationale, one minute area of why do the academies have to have this critical. And, you know, we can research the business side of things. We will research the business side. We will research the, you know, for the arts in those areas. We have to prove to students and parents, why is it important to take this course? Well, my counselor told me to take it. No, it's important to take it because these are the jobs and the career opportunities that are out there. We hope by doing visitations, we met with Cook Medical on Friday. Laura set this up. Had a great meeting with them. They probably gave us ten or fifteen contacts of other people we need to bring into it. They've invited us to come down to do tours of their plant. And at Cook Medical, they had, just like Dali Elanco, it's across the board, a variety of skill sets. We have to get our kids focused on something besides social networking, going to the mall, or even just playing a high school sport. The students we saw tonight are the student of the month. Those are the type of kids we're going to see down the road applying for these jobs. You know, I just think about my own two daughters, saying, boy, this course would have helped them and might help one in the future. So I guess with that, trying to make that connection, we'll throw it up to any questions to Bruce, or Kit, or Laura, or myself. Or you're just so kind of overwhelmed, not sure what to say.
I mean, the theory behind it is, you know, as adults, we comprehend this. But our kids today, that's where we need to really, you know, from so early, we need to reach them. I mean, the jobs that they're going to have, of course, haven't even been created yet. But, you know, to have them have a great education here at, you know, the small school in Beach Grove and have all of these opportunities, you know, those circumstances don't happen often. And we need to do everything we can to promote what's best for them. They're our future, so.
When we had the presentation to the students, I had a little half-page questionnaire that had eight questions on it. And one of those things is, what do you see as a positive about this program? What do you see as a negative? Okay? One student actually wrote down, it looks like a lot of work, and I don't want to work that hard.
Well, guess what?
Okay?
Welcome to the real world.
That's right. Welcome to the real world. But what the students picked up on were two things. I want to be able to have hands-on learning approach to scientific exploration, and I want to understand my career options. That's what they picked up on. I asked the parents what they thought their kids picked up on. They were really right on. I asked the parents what they thought were the most important of these four. The parents, a couple of them mentioned, hey, I can see the importance of my child developing confidence to be able to talk in front of a group. I can see the qualities of wanting them to be able to have leadership and be able to be in a group and actually have an impact. The parents picked up on that. The students didn't pick up on it as much. But that is one of the real benefits that the students will also have. Are there any other questions? I thank you for the time that you've given me this evening. I apologize for going over my ten minutes, but that's the way it is.
Bruce, I'm just sitting looking at this presentation. I asked Bruce, would you just give us information about jobs? And I think he did. And, you know, and best, set a key point. Right now, we're training our kids for jobs that don't exist. So it's not the content, but it's the skill set. And as I talk to employees, they want kids that are going to show up every day, or young adults are going to show up every day, they have good attendance, they work collaboratively, they have leadership skills, they're able to take a project or a practice and do it without a lot of supervision. And I mentioned to you before, my brother-in-law and sister-in-law both went through ag education programs, one at Cloverdale, one at Tipton. My father-in-law is a former agricultural teacher turned superintendent. And, you know, just my experience, I know this is going to make a difference for our kids, so. But we appreciate the feedback, and I'll ask for any last-minute questions. And then we'll need to transition to some more financial, the next step of that.
And please keep the cups, and please talk about the program. Thank you.
Now, the next part of our meeting really gets down to the nuts and bolts of the 1028 hearing. We've got Bob around here to help us with that. You know, this is all great. And as we look around the table, a couple of you are Beach Grove graduates. And a couple of you probably spent your high school career in our science classes, or maybe you missed that along the way. But our science classes are kind of in need of an update. And, you know, one of the things exciting about this is that we think it'll draw kids to our school and our community. Bruce and I met up at the science department about two weeks ago. And while we were meeting with them, we just finished up, and some students started coming into Brandon Goodman's class. And out of the blue, I just asked a student, I said, hey, what would you think about taking animal science? She goes, oh, my gosh, I'm so glad this is going on. And she went into this ten-minute oration as that she was going to transfer to Eastern Hancock because they had an ag program, we didn't. And now that she was going to take two classes, you know, next year. We're all for the introduction to ag class, both at the middle school. It'll be a mandated class for every eighth grader. They'll come to the high school and take a careers class, a second careers class, and a personal finance class, which really ties into this. And then from their sophomore year on, every kid will have an individualized education plan based on a pathway. Now, to do that, if we really want to take our science program to the next level, I'm recommending that we look at renovating, and I provided you a copy in your packet of the rooms themselves. And we're talking about renovating room 111 and 113. Those will become the applied life science classrooms. And we'll be, district-wide, we'll be hired, my prediction, as we've talked to both Tom Geerhart and Steve Cox, we'll hire three teachers upfront. I want to remind you that the funding for those teachers will come right back to us from the state. For every kid that enrolls one of these classes, we get from three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars per kid through vocational funding. So our goal is, now, right now, those are actually three classrooms. Room 111 and 113, there's actually, 111 is two classrooms. We invite a quality program, we're going to make those updated science labs. And they exit right into the courtyard for use. Brandon Goodman's room, I'm going to have to put my glasses on to see this number, 128. That's currently two rooms. It's a room with a wall and a lab. We'll knock down the wall, make that one physics room. And then our biology, 126 and 124, those rooms won't be changed a lot. Maybe some painting, maybe a little bit of updating. Definitely cleaning out the back storage area in those two rooms. And then we're looking to add on three much-needed classrooms. A biology anatomy classroom, Kevin Banks will be in that classroom. And then the two new chemistry rooms, Laurie Lamar and Allison Brown will be in those two rooms. We have visited Cedar Central last Friday. The week before that, we visited Franklin Community Schools just to get a feel for it. In addition, we'll go down to room 106, which is right down the hallway. That is, it seemed to become a junk room. That'll be renovated into a fax, family consumer science classroom. And that's the scope of the project. 107, 105, 108, you know, we'll paint those rooms, do some minor things. But those are, two of those are currently fax classrooms. And 108 will be a general classroom. So that's the scope of the renovation. And again, in the back, Dan Rollins from Inner Design is here. If you have any questions for him. Let me talk about how the project works, and then how the financing will work. Tonight, we move forward, I'll ask your permission to hire Dan's company to do the design-build project. What's really nice about the design-build project is the fact that we hire a firm that helps us with some initial design, and then they put out requests for proposals. So we're working on that process as we speak, and here's the timeline. And the financing of the project is anytime you have a project that's over a million dollars, you have to have a 1028 hearing.
Well, let's open the hearing so that this can be in the
Okay, I thought, I thought, I thought in essence, we opened the hearing from the very beginning with the presentation.
Yeah, I thought that that was mentioned when, before Kit
Yes. The hearing actually opened up with Kit and the presentation before. Okay. Will you do that?
Do we need, we just need to make a motion to open the hearing?
Yes, because he's going to go with the finance.
Okay, that'll do it.
Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great. Thank you. So you want to hopefully understand why we want to do the project for once you're here with the Life Science Initiative. And you have a feel for basically what we're trying to do. And the project maximum is two million dollars. And we will stay with, under that amount. We won't know exactly how, you know, the bids come back, et cetera, et cetera, until we move down the road. But, you know, from the standpoint, we're advertising, the project is a two-million-dollar or less project. The financing will be one of two ways. We'll do a traditional building corp like we did previously. Or, and/or, well, actually, I should say, we'll apply in March for what's called a common school loan. Right now, actually, the lower interest rates are with the building corp process that we've done in the past. So we'll go down that road. On the common school loan, that money comes from the state of Indiana. And then they just reduce that of our general fund. If it's a building corp like we've done in the past, it'll go through selling bonds on the open market. And so that's kind of a summary. And I'll turn it over to Tom or to Bob to kind of fill in the gaps of what the process will be.
Just one more sort of housekeeping detail. Just one more sort of housekeeping detail. Notice that this hearing were published, and I don't, I don't have that date, but...
They were published on the 17th of February, one week after my birthday.
Both in the Star and for the...
Yeah, they were in the Court Commercial, and they were also in the Atlas Star, and I have these to enter into our work process for this evening.
And again, as Dr. Kaiser said, if a project's anticipated to cost in excess of a million, this hearing is required by statute. At this hearing, a little bit later, after there's a little more discussion and presentation on the cost and the tax rate, interested patrons can give testimony or ask questions about the project.
Yeah, and the process is very similar. We did a common school construction loan approximately two and a half years ago, right around there. I think you might remember, maybe three years ago. Very similar to that, and we are a candidate for that with our socioeconomic status. So I'm really encouraged. We would avoid some bond fees and some...
Issuance costs.
Yeah, council fees and some issuance costs. So that would be a great way for me to be able to help the school corporation finance it. So I'd really kind of keep my fingers crossed that that money will be appropriated here in the general session in the next couple of weeks here. So we'll find that out, but it'll be four to six weeks, so it's going to be a little while before we kind of muck through that financing piece. But we'll have everything else in place. The Common Wage Hearing is tomorrow morning to kind of talk about all the legitimate, you know, legitimate legal processes that we have to go through. So everything's kind of in order to move forward, and I'll report back as soon as I know what way we might go in financing.
I don't know which one of you would probably want to explain to the public, but the tax rate might increase, you might want to talk about, the loans that we are going to pay down to help us not have such a big burden when we have this. I mean, my...
I can go ahead and do that. Basically, we have the ability to refinance some current debt at a much lower interest rate when that debt was taken out, any number of years, actually, the 2005 issue. We have the ability to reduce those loans going forward. We also have a pension bond debt that we can reduce, and those are scheduled. We've been working with Kelly at Key Bank, so that's on the horizon. So when these, when these kick in, it would be an increase of four cents on the tax rate. But as these increase, those others should decrease, so it'll be tax neutral if not savings. We also have some other opportunities down the road to refinance some other ones, just because the cost of money is less expensive. So we hope to refinance some other bonds beyond the two I just talked about to reduce the property tax caps, which then would allow more money to go into capital projects down the road. But the effects of this borrowing, it'll be between about $145,000 a year payback, which is four cents on the current tax rate. But again, by the time it hits the taxpayer, that sells, we're refinancing some other things, so it's going to be neutral if not less. Again, everybody needs to understand with the current scenario, you're going to pay 1% of the property value, and that's it. It won't be under that, and it won't go over that. You know, we have a tax cap loss of almost $2.5 million. We make up 1.35 of that in the referendum. The rest of that's lost, and we've cut almost a million dollars out of our capital projects over the last three or four years. So, you know, again, very cost neutral. You know, on paper, it's an increase of four cents, but the bottom line, as we move forward with it, you know, the taxpayers will never see that increase. One, there's a cap, and two, we're going to come back and ask the board to refinance some other things here, and really in the next six to 12 months, which will make it actually neutral. So Bob and Tom, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, the tax cap, I think for every, I think for every homeowner, I think the tax cap is absolutely the most important piece. 1% is 1% on residential property. And so the challenge that it gives us as a school corporation and the business department is what pockets of money, the monies that we do receive, how do we use them for our debt service, or do we use them for capital projects, which is, you know, normal maintenance every year? So the challenge is really in the budget process on our end, but you can't exceed the 1% outside of the referendum that's in place. And so it used to be that you could add four cents, and four cents, and four cents, but you can't do that anymore. So the challenge really is in the business office and making sure that I can pay the bills. And so that's, you know, that's what we do. And so I think that this is, you know, when we really talk about students and the need to have students in a program that drives instruction and is something that is really a cornerstone for our district, this type of academy approach is what will have students and families excited about continuing to be a Beach Grove education student. And so that's exciting to me. You good?
Questions?
No questions.
Are there any other technical things we need to do for the 10-28?
I think now would be a time to invite, if there are anybody that wants to voice their opinion or ask any questions.
We have a group of about eight people in the audience tonight. Are there any comments or feedback?
Wow, no thoughts, concerns? Look. Okay. Do you want me to make a motion? So we need to make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, to close the hearing.
Or do you want to approve the project?
Well, no, you go ahead and do the...
Close the first?
No, go ahead and close the testimony, but before you close the hearing, you need to go ahead and make the motions and take action on the motions.
That's very good.
I have no idea what you just said.
Next, next time.
So you want me to make a motion to, to approve the project resolution to renovate and construct the classrooms to enhance teaching and learning at Beach Grove High School? Who would like to make that motion? Beth?
I will second that.
And Tim will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we need a motion to adopt the declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures resolution related to the science initiative project at the high school.
I'll make the motion, yes.
Melody?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now you want me to close the hearing?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
Thanks, Tim.
Second.
Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. I know for us as a staff and a high school, this is very exciting, and a year from now, we hope to have some open houses and actually invite anybody in the community, or neighboring communities that want to be involved and enroll in Beach Grove High School to take advantage of the life science program. We're rolling out the red carpet. For those from the districts who would like to be part of this program, all to do is see Mr. Cox, and they can enroll next fall to become a warrant. So we're excited about those opportunities.
Okay, so we're going to do that.
Yep.
A motion to approve January minutes?
Absolutely.
Beth, second. Judy, opposed. I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Claims, we need a motion to approve the claims as presented. Everybody read those right. Do you have any questions or for you to approve them? Claims? No questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Okay, Tim.
I'll second it, Janice.
Thanks, Melody. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Keely, how about a business update?
Absolutely. In the business world, at the, as you know, the end of the year has come and went, and doing that, 2011 came with it with some transfers and balancing funds for our January Form Nine, that's our annual compliance report to the state DOE Finance. And in doing that, I need a motion to actually have permission to do that balancing act that's been submitted, so that is kind of a piece there. Before I finish with the business report, Skyward is something I just want to mention because it is an expense, and it is a contract to kind of change over. Right now, we're in a DOS-based system called Computrol. Computrol is something that cannot be worked at from home, you can't log in. My new treasurer certainly is kind of into the new communication world, and we together are struggling with the DOS-based system because of its archaic nature. It'll offer an opportunity to have an employee portal where they'll be able to make changes into a lot of neat things. So I think it's going to be a wonderful segue. About two years ago, we moved to online checks and payroll, the online application, online, on the website, all those things. Instead of having separate vendors for every little bit, RevTrack and soft, search soft, software, and all these different companies, Skyward puts it all under one umbrella, and it's all one company. And so when somebody applies, I push their information over to an employee, pushes their information over to payroll, so there's no double and triple entry of information. So this is a huge, a huge step for our financial business software. So I think that that'll bring us into the new world, and I'm excited for it, and I think I'll be able to keep my treasurer as an employee.
A little time.
Very important. It's going to save an incredible amount of time because, yeah, instead of answering every single question, all of our employees will be able to put their leaves online, put them in requests. Pops up an email to me, I approve or deny the request, whether they have vacation days or personal days or sick or bereavement, whatever. It's going to save an incredible amount of time. And I would say, I would venture to say, if this was not going to be put in place, I'd have to clone Pam and have another Pam because it's just really, really pretty busy right now. This is going to help out quite a bit. That being said, I do need a motion to have the year-end transfers report as presented.
Would you like to make that motion, please?
I will.
Beth, second. Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need a motion to approve the change from Computrol to Skyward.
I'll make the motion, Janice.
Tim, beach of Melody.
I'll do the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keely, personnel update?
Couple of things here. New employees, I have a new social studies teacher I really want to welcome to Beach Grove, Anthony Osborne, outstanding candidate out of Columbus, and I'm really excited to have him starting. I put all the information in there. We have quite a few leaves right now going on, and with new staff comes some change, and so that's some good opportunity through there. I put all that information in the personnel update. Kaiser, would you like to present the other piece of that?
Yes, I will. We have a recommendation this evening to hire Melody Stevens as our new executive director for the Education Foundation, and Tom and his team went through the interview process, and she was by far the top candidate. Melody is well-known at Beach Grove, has served on the, at the school board in her eighth year, and just an exciting time for us because we do so many great things at Beach Grove and have someone working full-time at Education Foundation and also promoting our school corporation. You know, we talked about the life science program, what a great initial project for our new Education Foundation person. And as we talked about, intercessions and opportunities for kids, why this position becomes so important, connected to the school, is we have to raise money. We have kids that want to go to the Purdue Science Camp, we have kids that want to go on extended field trips, we have kids that want to go to New York City and do other things, and quite frankly, we don't, they don't have the money. And I know with the idea that Melody, she's currently the board president of Education Foundation, I think we're going to be a new era. I think we'll have additional board members jumping back on the Education Foundation. I think it's an exciting time for us, and Melody has, she and I have talked a lot about the different things that she has in mind, and she's going to be making a presentation to the board in the very near future about where we're going with Education Foundation and promoting the school. So I'm proud to present, Melody is our next Education Foundation Executive Director.
Thank you very much.
And also...
Thanks, Bruce.
One other item is, I was, I'm eliminating Schedule B employees, so Steve Cox, I'll have a meeting with you down the road if it's approved. People work, and this is kind of an eventual change with the balanced calendar, many, many DOE reports, many things that we didn't used to be, you know, we used to leave for the summertime and not have communication with a lot of people. And so I'm going to start to kind of have conversation in the next few months, maybe, on our work schedules and some of the things with intercessions and with summer shortening and balanced calendar conversations, we're going to be, we're going to be having conversations of new challenges, and one of those challenges is to eliminate Schedule B. And so that's kind of a big budgetary deal, and I'll talk to you about that down the road as well. So those are all the personnel items. We had a great time interviewing Melody, I'll be honest. For 25 years of experience, I had no idea that you worked for the Children's Museum and led their educational department. How cool is that? When I was a science teacher and I was hooking up with the online, they did this science presentation there from, in the basement, and I had all my students, when I was a science teacher, watching that. I had no idea she's behind it. She was the one kind of directing that. And so that's just one inkling of her 25 years, Mothers Against Drunk Driving and Handicapped Hands, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful years of experience. And to get a homegrown Beach Grove resident who truly knows our population and everything that's been going on, it is a wonderful recommendation. So I give 100% of my backing as well to the recommendation of Melody, too.
Hey, I need a...
I think I'm motion to approve the...
Okay, Tim?
I'll second it.
Nancy, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Melody. Thank you.
Can I add something?
No.
Well, the unfortunate part of Melody now becoming an employee of the school district, she'll have to resign her position as school board. And so in the, in the upcoming weeks, and Bobby, please help me with this also as a school board attorney, we will be posting the position on our website and getting that information out there. And Robin has worked with Bob on some legal timelines and things like that. So we'll be getting that information out. So from the day that she starts working for us officially, we will have 30 days from that day to hire, to appoint someone, and it'll be the school board's responsible to do that. Bob, would you like to add to that legal...
The other thing I would add would be, Melody's resignation as a board member would need to be, need to coincide with that start date, or effective date of resignation, because it's really, it's really the acceptance of the resignation that starts the 30-day clock running.
Right. And so we do have some time there, but we will be putting information out on the webpage to, you know, to find another exciting newborn member like we had with Judy that came on a year ago, and that person would finish the term through Janu-, through December 31st of 2012, and then, and then obviously, there'll be election in November. You know, we'll have four board members have at that point in time. So it's kind of good and bad. It's exciting for us and exciting for her, but at the same time, we're losing a very good board members, and I'm just very pleased that I have six rock-solid board members here to continue our, our leadership and doing the things that we've done. I know my, gosh, three and a half, three and three-quarters year have truly been a joy because of the school board and what you've given us the opportunity to do for our kids, and the life science program, CQI, the 101 Technology, you're all part of that, and I think it has made a difference for our kids. Thank you for your service, and we've got to get to work. We've got a lot of work to do.
We actually have to have a meeting to accept her resignation.
Yeah. We would have to have a separate meeting for that, Bob?
You probably should unless there's an existing policy that allows Janice to accept the resignation.
I wonder if I don't want to.
I suppose you can make the policy right here.
Well, so could the board make a motion this evening to allow Janice to accept?
Authorize Janice to accept it, and then, you don't want to accept it too soon because you don't want your 30-day clock to...
But that'll be based on, that'll be based on when she officially starts.
Do you have a start date yet?
No, not yet. I'll be giving a little bit longer notice because of the assignment currently.
Sure.
But what's really good is that she's already president of the Education Foundation, she's already working for free.
Yeah.
Doing some of those responsibilities, so, you know, should we...
Yes, make a motion and second pass that do authorize Janice as president of the board to be able to accept board member resignations.
Will somebody approve that motion for me to have a...
Let us have we allow our board president to accept resignation from board members?
I will second that.
Thanks, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Will you let us know? Have a meeting before then, let us know so that we know when the thirty days starts.
Yeah, we'll communicate. And also, we'll need to start looking at our calendars at some point in time. I've got a, a very, very rough calendar put together, but the dates are not specific. Just knowing that we, we need to start looking at this, you know, uh, moving forward based on when, Melody, we'd love to have her stay on the board as long as she can. And, and, and then we'll, whenever she makes that decision, we'll put her on the payroll and then that'll, that'll kick in the thirty days that we officially have to appoint someone. But our goal, my goal looking at this is to have someone by the May board meeting, you know, sitting in that chair. Cause I want some time to, uh, you know, start some orientation with them and give some, some, some ideas on what it's like to be a board member.
Other business would that be you talking to?
Well, I want to jump back to, we'll go back to Phil. Just on operations.
Yeah, in your board packet.
I went right by you.
That's okay. In your board packet, you should have an operations update. And it is just the summary of the current HVAC, uh, project that we have going on. Just a couple of quick highlights that we've been able to start work that we originally thought we couldn't start until June one. So we're underway with a lot of work already. The jockey boilers have been set on their new concrete pads and that's at the high school and the middle school. And another, uh, new event, the, uh, middle school chiller has already been installed and it was scheduled for March first. So, uh, we're, we're ahead of the game right now and everything's moving smoothly with that HVAC project. And I'll continue to keep you updated.
And just to point out, we are gonna have quite a bit of energy savings and quality learning environment savings with, with this project. So, uh, Dan will be done obviously by the time school starts in the fall.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, just as I mentioned earlier, uh, Dan is here from the, uh, InterDesign and I asked for a motion to hire them as the design build criteria development. And again, just so you know their role, their role is to really kind of be the, uh, the long, kind of the long relief pitcher who's in there trying to set everything up. And, and based on the criteria and a technical review to the team, they will actually select the company that does the construction. The huge advantage of this process, it saves us money. Because we don't have to take, you know, uh, we give a lot of flexibility. We can go out and really seek out and find the individual contractors that we feel will do the best job and the most cost-effective. If someone makes a quote, a quote on, on an aspect of the project, you know, we can say, well, you know, we would like to have a lower price and go back out and try to seek a lower price. It gives us a lot of flexibility with the design build. So, what'll happen, Dan will leave a, lead a technical review committee. And, uh, Tom and Phil, myself and, uh, Brian, I believe.
Matt English.
And Matt English and, uh, Tim? Uh, Beth?
No.
Tim's not on, okay. We will basically sit down with Dan and look at all the proposals of the contractors and we'll decide which contractor we feel best meets the needs of, uh, Beach Grove City Schools. And it's not just the lowest price, it's, it's the total package we look at. You know, what are their experience, what are their qualifications? And, and from that selection, we'll make a decision, uh, along with an engineer and an architect from Dan's company, which he is one of those two. And so we'll have a really, really very technical, uh, standpoint from the engineering and the, you know, the architectural background to select the company we feel will do the project the best. Dan, could you, would you like to add anything to that?
Can I answer the questions, anyone?
I was just going to mention, I'm working directly with Dan already. We're gathering input from the science staff and the, uh, family consumer science people. We went on some site visits. We took video of all the areas that are involved in the project. So, when we actually go to post on websites, contractors can actually view, uh, the areas that we're talking about. So, um, we're, we're working as a team, so.
I need a motion to approve the InterDesign as a design bill criteria developers.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Tim?
I'll second it.
Melody? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And about the contractor, will we do that one too? Or do you need to talk about that person?
I can talk about that.
Okay.
But you want to make a motion first and then I can do it. Well, just in that sense, we've been working for, gosh, three years, talking about having a police liaison officer in, in our school system. And we're real excited with Mayor Buckley to, to have an agreement. And to my right, uh, we have an office where the liaison officer, officer will be and this person will be with us, you know, every day, uh, throughout the school year and also during the summer. And, uh, you know, we're, we are paying for half of that and the city of Beach Grove will pay for half of that. And we really appreciate it in the tough economic times for Mayor Buckley to step forward along with Chief and, and his staff to do this. They'll be posting the position. Once the city council here in Beach Grove approves it, they'll post it and follow their guidelines for an open position. And then we'll be very excited to have someone here every day.
So will it only be posted for Beach Grove?
You know, I, I really can't answer that. I don't know the guidelines within the FOP and what they're gonna do. But I, I was told they'll post the position, you know. But again, I don't know how that process works, you know.
I have a question because we, we, um, we completely agree with the position that we had, which is about this division of the salary. Can we talk about that? Do we...
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we can table it for a later if you like and then come back and do it a later time. You know, whatever's, whatever works for you.
Well, and on this agreement part, I know it just said that I, or the first one I read said that it was a draft. I'm not sure if this, this one is a newer one.
Listen, I wrote, I...
Pardon?
I drafted it and, and then we went back and forth and we've made some tweaks with Paul and with Craig Wiley, the attorney for the city.
Uh-huh. There was a couple, like the one that says it was going the fiscal year, August one to July thirty-one. And then it said, um, July one to June thirty. I mean, not that that's a big deal, I just... That was one thing. Something else, something else. Oh. I don't know whether this is the time to ask about whatever. Why is it a three-year?
A three-year agreement?
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, I just was curious whether, you know, our other...
That's a typical salary.
It's more than a, you know...
Well, I, I think that the city, we had a meeting with Greg Wiley, the city attorney and the mayor.
Right.
And I just feel like, um, a reasonable amount of time for change like that. They don't want the department continually, you know, moving people around and changing.
Right.
And I think the three years is just a commitment. I mean, it's obvious to us, especially in light of, um, different events over the last twelve months, in my opinion, that this expenditure in the personnel department is cost-effective, number one. I mean, it really is. Because I spend a lot of money out of our public, uh, out of one specific account line on the general fund on continuing to hire and keep police officers for athletic events, middle school events, anytime I feel like there's potential for or had history of violence. So the cost-effectiveness is good.
So we won't have to do that?
Limited. We still will, I still think that at certain larger events, like a Friday night baseball game, I, I, I still think you need more than one. But this, this coordinates all opportunity. It, it doesn't leave kind of the administrative offices guessing and wondering and Steve Cox calling me, hey, you think we need somebody?
That's kind of that person.
Well, we have, we have somebody with training in that area to say, here's our strategic plan for flow of people, you know, crowd control, traffic patterns, things like that. They can even review our bus routes. I think this is an outstanding proactive safety, uh, situation that, that I think is well worth the money. But the three-year plan, in my opinion, is really just a commitment. Because when you change a road officer's position, you really change their whole world. Their, their, you know, whether they had been working in the evening or any of those things. So I think the three-year commitment is just exactly that. Leave some common, commonality for a little while and understand it gives us some time to review whether we want to renew it or not.
And let me, let me address the salary a little bit. The, the dollar amount I put in your, in your kind of information is just if they were to hire an officer who's at the very top. And that's the total benefits package. Whoever they, whoever they hire will determine how much our share is. So instead of coming in and saying, we're gonna pay this, we just agreed to pay half. So if it's a younger officer, our portion of the total package will be less. If it's a, a more mature officer with years of experience, uh, it'll be a higher amount. The amount I put in there of the forty-five thousand, uh, is if we hired whoever's at the top of the scale. I don't know what that dollar amount is, but it's just an estimate right now. The person we hire will not be getting a, the person that, the, the, the chief and, and, and Tom and Steve select, they won't be getting a raise by taking this position. They'll take whatever their current salary is and it'll apply over and then we split the cost. So that'll vary. So the number we have in there is if they hired someone who's at the top. And again, I don't, we don't know at this point in time who's gonna be, uh, I'm assuming probably transferred from within the department, going back to answering your question, so...
So can we take the numbers out and just say technically we agree to pay half?
Yeah.
That's what's in the agreement.
That's in the agreement.
It was just the information.
Yeah, the information. Don't, don't be throwing, I, what, what...
There's no numbers in the agreement.
Yeah, what, what...
That's what we were throwing off.
Yeah, what Mayor Buckley did, he said if we hired this officer who's at the top, if you look at their total benefits package, insurance and everything, that's what, that would be the top.
Okay.
And so that's why I put that number in, just so you know what ours, probably the maximum that we would make. Now, as that officer gets a raise, you know, through their merit system, we'll pick up half that raise and that's what we're for. So that's a, I'm glad you asked for clarification on that.
In that conversation in here, this paragraph, it's just a lot of full, just full disclosure that, how that dollar figure would be in the max.
We think that'll be the max that we have.
Yes.
And my father retired as an IPD police officer. The last year he worked in nineteen seventy-five, he made, he made about fifteen thousand dollars. He made as much in retirement on his pension as he did working. So, uh, a very, very nice profession to go into nowadays and a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of positives being an officer. So we're glad to have someone here. We don't know who this person will be at this point in time. The, the city will go through their process and select someone and...
And we, the school under the contract has a lot of input and can effectively veto if they're disenchanted with the decision, even though it's their hire.
Okay. Even though it is the city's hire, they have, so they have...
Yeah, we have final...
And I appreciate Bob and, and, uh, Mr. Wiley spending a lot of time working through the, the verbiage on this. And, and again, the city council will approve this, I believe, at their next meeting. And, uh, but again, we spent a lot of time on getting the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Thanks. Thanks for the third one and everything.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve the agreement with the city.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Tim?
Second.
Beth?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I, just, I'd talk about Neola.
If you'd like to.
Yes.
Paul, you want to mention the lease renewal? I know there's no action.
Yeah, just, I, as I mentioned to you earlier in the work session, we're gonna be working with the city. We have a twenty-year lease to...
License agreement.
License agreement, thank you.
Yeah, it says lease here, but it's...
Yeah, license agreement to utilize our former boardroom. Currently, right now, that is our, our special ed preschool. Uh, and you heard, saw one of our students who's involved in that program. That's where we store, store all their, their, their equipment, their trucks and all the things for mobility that we have. That's in the old boardroom. And then that also includes Tim Restler's office, which connects it. In the agreement, when we worked with the city, when they converted the, uh, outdoor swimming pool to the current facility, that was our part of it. We paid them, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in those days, uh, along with that and also the right to the land, uh, to be able to use the land. So, we have to renew that every twenty years. So Bob's gonna work with the city attorney to let them know our intent to, we don't have to renew until two thousand and fifteen, but we thought, since we're kind of going through the documents, this would be a good time to go ahead and send notice to the city that we want to, uh, renew the, uh, the agreement. Again, there's no additional cost, it's just that every twenty years, we have to give a notification. I will not have to worry about the next notification because I might be retired by